Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It is now 5:01 and the Warwick City Council Finance Committee has called to order. Hello. We will start out with accepting the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting on March 10th.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Need minutes, I'm sorry, accept under the minutes from the committee meeting held on March 10th on the consent calendar.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll let the record show that Councilman Napper is not going to be with us this evening. He has notified the CP as such. So we have a unusual, I think, first time ever situation where we don't have any bids coming before us this evening that are over $50,000. I don't ever remember anything like that occurring. But with that said, anyone on the committee have any items that you would like to single out for questions and comments? Anyone on the committee have any questions?
And it's going to be a little bit lighthearted, but item seven, the face painting artist.
Oh, you're reading my mind. Okay. Item number seven is pulled out by Councilman Foley. Are there any others, any other items that anyone would like to have pulled out?
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Anyone from members of the council?
No, no, that's all right. Just, we want to make sure if there was anything you wanted pulled. Nope, they're all good.
Okay. Councilman Kirby, any, any items on the consent, on the bid package you would like to have pulled out? Councilman Kirby, anything on the bid package? None. Anyone from members of the public? Any members of the public have anything? Sir, come to the mic, please. Identify yourself for the record.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for your time. We just wanted to be present today.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Brian Bray, O-Campus IT Compliance.
William DePalma from O-Campus IT Compliance.
Go to the mic, please. Talk slow and into the mic.
William DePalma, O-Campus IT Compliance.
Okay. And which item would you like to have pulled out?
Thank you. We, we had submitted a bid for IT Security Services for the city of Warwick. Just wanted to kind of represent our company.
Which bid?
It was O-Campus IT Compliance. I don't know how you, oh, sorry, it's a bid 2025-389.
2025.
Councilman.
2025-389.
Councilman.
Phil Carlucci, IT Director. These gentlemen are speaking of a bid that does not come before council yet. I have not submitted it.
Okay. We have nothing on our, on our calendar for that.
No, we just understood this was an opportunity for vendors to be present and just speak on their proposal.
No, there's nothing, nothing to speak on because there's nothing before us. However, we do have Rule 41 in a little while. If you'd like to make a comment, then. You're free to comment.
Can you explain, can you explain Rule 41 to the gentleman?
Off mic. Off mic, please. Let's just have one person talking at a time, please. Okay. Once again, anyone else have anything that you would like to have pulled out? One more time, anything? Sir, come to the podium. Please vacate the podium, please. State your name for the record, please. I can't hear you. Speak right into the mic.
No, it's on.
Is it on? Hold on.
Edward Beegan.
And which item would you like to have pulled out, sir?
The, regarding the school funding, the unfinished business, is this a appropriate time?
No, sir. No, this is strictly on, on the items that are forbid, but that will come up later on.
Later on during this, okay.
Sir, that's correct. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so everyone can follow it home, we are in the Finance Committee, specifically the bid package that's been posted. We're only eligible at this time to talk about those items, as the chairman noted, and so no, no other business can be brought up or discussed. It is just the bid package and what is posted on the agenda.
Thank you for that clarification. I would like to call out 2025-085 Telephony Services, found on page one. And we will start with, with that item right now.
Good evening. Phil Carlucci, IT Director. This is a request under City Ordinance 612 to increase the spending authority on bid 2025-085, expiring 63025 by $13,000. This takes the bid from 120,600 to 133,600. We've pro, these bids, excuse me, these invoices come in half months, so we've processed up through February with $29,000 in spending authority remaining. The invoices have been running about 10,430, something along those lines, just over 10,000. We did have half of a month from fiscal year 2024 come into 2025, so that represents about $5,000. I anticipate for half of March, April, May, June, it's probably going to come in around $37,000, somewhere around there. I did up it by a full 13,000 to cover off on a month. These are burying, burying fees that we get because of moves, additions, adding a conference phone or something along those lines. This is just a request for the spending authority. My intention, if approved, is not to raise the purchase order at this point in time, but to wait until we get near the end of the year and see exactly what we need to, to do.
And what do you attribute this, these additional costs to? I know you say slightly with phone additions, removal services, et cetera.
Yeah, thi, this is an estimate I do every year. I take whatever the last bill was, multiply it times 12 during budget time, and just say, this is what I anticipate. Up it slightly for some moves, adds, changes, and deletes things along those lines. Then when I come to council, I just multiply it out and do the best I can, and then each year we try to adjust as we get toward the end of the year. Things that might be changing, someone says, these are all desk phones, these are not cell phones. Someone needs to take out a specific type of, maybe a low-end phone, add one with a sidecar, costs a little more each month. We might have an additional person come on board, or several additional people come on board. We need to add in those phones. If we swap out a regular phone for a, they're called spider phones, but you know those conference phones, that conference room phones, they cost a little bit more. We might have some uncovered repair that we have to pay for. So i, it's fairly steady. It's rare to see them over 11,000. Sometimes they're down to 9,800, but it's just not 100% consistent.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the committee? Do we have any questions from members of the council? Any questions from members of the council? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Any questions from members of the public? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Thank you for that, Director.
Thank you.
We will move to the next item. Councilman Foley has requested 2025-375 to be pulled out. Please identify yourself for the record, and Councilman Foley, so would you.
I'm Beverly Wiley. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. I, like I said, lighthearted in the sense that, how many people bid on that?
We, for the balloon twist, for the balloon twisters or the?
The face, stay with the face painting. Two.
Right.
Okay. And, and did we have it last year?
Yes. What, what in, when we were doing the Marketplace and Rocky Point events, a couple of times, when we first did it, we had, you know, some folks just came in and volun, you know, volunteered their ti, not volunteered their time, but set up a marketplace to do the, to do the face painting. What we found was that they work on tips. So, you know, kids wanted to get their face painted, but yet mom didn't want to have to pay or anything for it. So we looked at our budget, and we had enough in our recreation budget to be able to cover the cost of face painters and balloon animals and also the bounce house that we have. And so we decided to put that out to bid, and putting it out to bid, we're actually saving money from what we had before, but the kids, the kids love it. We actually have to shut it down at a certain point because they, they're all, they're there and they want to be able to get their face painted or the balloon animals. And all three of the folks that we have coming are very professional and do such a great job that the kids look forward to it, and so we decided that we would, our budget could cover that expense, and it ended up getting us more folks coming to the, to our events.
I, I bet it does. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman. Director, the question that I had is, this rate of $150 per hour for one to four hours, is, is that the going rate for face painting?
Yes. They could do it, they could do it one of two ways. They could do it, the $150 an hour for anywhere from one to four hours, or they could charge $500 for a five-hour event, but they'd want tips.
So at $500, over here, it says $500 per hour with tips.
Yeah, but that's, that's a typo.
That's a typo.
Should be, should be $500, $500 for a five-hour, for a five-hour event.
All right. That was my, my next question. So it's either or?
Yes.
$150 for one to four?
Yes.
Or 500 with tips for an event of five hours?
Yes.
And which one are you looking to do?
The, the one for the five hours.
The one for five hours?
Yeah. We just didn't want to put any pressure on parents or anything. Parents can still tip if they like. They can still offer a tip, but there's not, there's nothing, there's nothing within, you know, no sign saying, you know, it's tips, tips are welcome or encouraging tips. So it's just mostly, some of the parents will give a tip, some won't. But there's no, it's not, it's not something that's forced on people.
And where it says Parks and Recs are seeking spending authority of 4,200, that's for all six events?
Yes. Seven, actually seven.
And it's going to be $500 per event?
Yes.
So why do we need 4,200 as opposed to 3,000?
Well, if, if one of them got rained out and we had to postpone or do, do it part, part of the day, and, or if we picked up another, if we picked up another event that we wanted to put, put a face painter in. That was a suggestion given to us by purchasing, so that we didn't exceed our spending authority, and I'd have to come back and ask you for more money.
So you're actually looking for an additional, almost two and a half additional events?
Yeah, if we needed it, but we, hopefully we can save that money and not spend it.
Okay. Sure. Councilman Foley? We up on the chair. So if, if event was scheduled today and got postponed, do we, do we have a lot, do we have to pay the vendor for something for today and hope they're available for tomorrow?
Yes.
That, that seems like standard.
Yes. Thank you. And in some cases, they, you know, they, so we, I have another event tomorrow, so I'm not available. But when we, we explain that to them, when they've come, you know, we, these are folks that we've worked with over the last couple of years, so they're, they're very, you know, they're very involved with us.
So if this event doesn't take place because of weather, I think you just said that if they can't make it, they call us or whatever. If they don't show up because of something with them, I would hope we're not paying them.
No, no, they have to be, they have to show up.
Okay.
They have to show up.
So the only way they get paid is if the event can't take place because?
Right, and we pay them, we pay them after.
Half of?
We pay them after. They submit an invoice, they submit an invoice after the event, and we, we process the payment then.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the committee? Any other questions from members of the council? Do we have any questions from members of the council? Any questions from members of the public? Is there anyone out there with any questions from the public? That is it. Thank you, Director. I appreciate it. If there are no other items of interest or wanting to hold out, I'll look for a motion on the bid package.
Make a motion.
Make a motion for favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and we are done at 5:16. Thank you very much.
Is that it? Is that a record?
That's a record for anything and everything I have ever done.
Next up this evening is the Intergovernmental Committee, which cannot begin until 5:00 PM. So we'll see you at 5:50 PM.
How much is that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
How fast do you get the seven going back there?
Not being familiar with how this works.
So that one's not even drafted, right? Oh, no, I was gonna say, yeah, that's why I was like, if he, he can't say, say anything if it's not drafted. Public comment, seven o'clock.
Sixty.
Anywhere you like.
Good evening. The Intergovernmental Committee will be starting momentarily.
Good evening. The time is now 5:50. The Intergovernmental Committee comes to order. First order of business, we have acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on March 10, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first up, PCR 2525 Resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend related to the high schools. This is not yet drafted. It's going to be withdrawn.
In committee?
Looking for a motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, PCR 3425 Resolution requesting the General Assembly to review and consider adopting amendments to the public records laws as presented in 2025 H 5457. This is Councilman Napa. Councilman Napa is not able to join us this evening. Does anyone want to introduce?
He requests it be held till April 21, please.
Okay. Looking for a motion to hold?
Motion to hold PCR 34-25.
Second.
And hold until, let me set the date one more time for me? April 21. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a second?
I am at one.
Did we do minutes?
We did do minutes, yep. Oh, everything else is unanimous consent. There being no further business before the Intergovernmental Committee, we move to adjourn. Time is 5:53.
That completes committees for this evening. We will be live with you at 7 PM for the Warwick City Council.
Is it seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
I gotta take off.
I gotta take off.
Councilman Lattiser, please lead us in a salute to the flag.
I know we have to have a moment of silence. First we'll have a moment of silence for the recently passed Gloria Walker.
First, we'll have a moment of silence for the recently passed Gloria Walker. Are there any other announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events? Councilman Muto?
I'd like to have a moment of silence for a close friend of mine and a friend of our Parks and Recreation, Greg Matson. He recently passed after a 15-year battle with many, many diseases, but a very good person and friend to the city of Warwick and Parks and Rec.
We have a moment of silence, please. Are there any other announcements of congratulations? I'm going to try that again. Any other announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events? Councilman Gepot?
This one's a congratulations. The East Greenwich Tolgate Boys Hockey Team won the championship.
Excellent news. Go Alma Mater. Any others? Seeing none, Executive Communications. We have acceptance of minutes from the council meeting held on March 10, 2025. Are there any objections to accepting the minutes from that meeting? Seeing none, so ordered. And then next, we have public comment, Rule 41. After General Communications and prior to the consent calendar at the last regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council each month, there shall be a period of time not to exceed 30 minutes during which citizens may comment about Warwick City Government issues subject to the following stipulations. The total period of time for public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes. Comments need to be brief in order to allow as many citizens as possible to participate. Each citizen signed up and present shall have not to exceed five minutes to speak, provided, however, that if more than six citizens are signed up and present, the 30 minutes will be split evenly amongst speakers. Time shall not be transferable amongst speakers. The topics for comment shall be issues directly affecting city government. City council members will not respond to questions during the public comment period. The public comment session will terminate at the expiration of the earlier of all speakers, concluding their allotted time or 30 minutes. Waiver of this provision requires unanimous vote of the council. First up, we have Ann Sheridan.
Good e- good e- good evening, gentlemen. And I say that in light of-
Can you please just identify yourself first?
Oh, I'm sorry. You did. Ann Sheridan, Ward nine. So again, good evening, gentlemen. And I say that in the fact that you dedicated Warwick to Women's History Month. And there's not a woman on our council for the first time in a bazillion years. It's not your fault, but just an observation in March. Okay, so to summarize the email that I sent out to all of you, I think when you see the budgets that's coming out next month or the following month, that you were framed from adding one-time income to the current budget year. It is really bad accounting. We have included a million and a half dollars of revenue from red light tickets for school districts. The project, the project hasn't even started yet. And yet, we're going to have to make up a million and a half dollars. You've, we've also added revenue from the sale of schools. I mean, when you've got so much unfunded liabilities, clearly that money should go somewhere else. And it shouldn't be matters that we just have to keep making up unrealistic revenue, like we found millions of dollars in funds that were sitting in some accounts. I think on a more pressing matter, the revaluation notices are coming up in a couple of months, and I think you need to work on the exemptions ASAP. And that when the taxpayers get their notices, they deserve to know how the, how it's going to affect them net-net. So I think the exemptions could be, could be rectified. They could be adjusted. The assessor, who is really one of the top-notch people in the state, can tell, can guarantee, can estimate what the value is. You know where you're going to go budget-wise within a little bit, and you should be able to come, the administration should be able to come up with an estimated tax rate that could clearly go out and help the people. I mean, when you've got so many seniors and so many people that are at the lower end of the scale, this, these new values are going to scare them a lot. And we don't need people being frightened when you have the power to give them information. I think if we, we currently give circuit breaker exemptions that are needs-based. I think that needs to be changed, that it leans on real estate, so that if any needs-based, we can, we can grant exemptions to people, but it can be recaptured when the house is sold. I mean, a lot of people, many of us have a lot of equity in our homes, and that shouldn't be passed on to our heirs, or if God forbid, we end up in a nursing home, get, get, you know, have them go first when we, when the city could go first. I think you should authorize a wage and benefits study, because I think we should guarantee that all the employees are at mid-range of salaries and benefits. You're in a good place right now. It's the beginning of a four-year term. When you've got so many contracts coming up, it would be a nice thing to have, to know that you've got independent outside people saying, this is what it should look like, whether it's the number of people and jobs, the quality and the capability of people. And it's probably never been done here. The other thing that's like a pie in the sky would be to get members of the county, have the council and the administration appoint extra people to the school.
You have one minute, Ms. Sheridan.
Committee. I mean, if the city's paying-
One minute, Ms. Sheridan.
I know, I'm almost done. If the city's paying 60% of, if the 60% of the city's revenue goes to support the schools, we should have more people representing the taxpayers than elected officials. Not you guys, but, you know, the, the school boards are all elected. And I'm not sure that their interests are at heart. Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin McDonald.
Good evening. My name is Kevin McDonald. I'm here with my life partner Beverly Chidham and my neighbor Tammy Dickerman. We want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I've been a resident and taxpayer of the city for 52 years. I currently pay over $7,500 a year in property tax, even with a veteran's exemption. I'm here tonight to speak to you about a dilemma that we are currently facing. Beverly and I purchased our house on Govan Drive in Ward eight in October of 2019. The property includes an easement that drains into a 36-inch culvert to the south. On September 2nd, 2021, we were awakened by a weather alert at approximately 4:00 A.M. We discovered at least five to six feet of water had poured into our basement. We experienced a good deal of water damage, to include appliances, washer, dryer, refrigerator, oil tank, and the furnace had to be rebuilt. There has been an extensive history of poor drainage and flooding on Govan Drive, especially our property. A previous owner, Joseph McGarry, built a six-foot cement wall protecting the property, which was later taken down by the house flipper who sold it to us. Lots of construction has taken place in our neighborhood, all of which were awarded building permits from the city. Home Depot, Innskip, Olive Garden, Market Basket, and all the predecessors were built uphill from this tiny little drain. Our northwest, to our northwest, we have a portion of Valley Country Club. And all the homes in between, Quail Ridge condo complex directly to the west sits atop a hill, of a hill, which contributes to the drainage system. The easement runs parallel with Bald Hill Road. It's located across the entire length of Govan Drive, draining into a 36-inch culvert that crosses Centerville Road. The Innskip complex has an additional 36-inch culvert, which also drains across Centerville Road. This drainage culminates in, through a 48-inch culvert into Harding Brook. On 10 January 24, we were out of town when Ms. Dickerman called and said that there was a large amount of water in our backyard. Beverly flew home that day, the entire basement to the top step. Seven to eight feet of water was deposited in our basement. The warfighter department eventually pumped us out. Three days later, another rainstorm came through. Water accumulated and flooded the basement again with two to three feet of water. On or about 15 January 2024, I contacted Mr. Louis Cologne from Constituent Affairs at Rhode Island House of Representatives. He connected us with the Department of Agriculture. During that timeframe, Darrell Moore and several engineers visited our property. Upon a visual inspection of the elevation of the backyard, the head engineer commented, "A house should never have been built here." Mr. Moore suggested that we could be eligible for a federal program to purchase our property, and the consensus was to demolish the house and install a retention pond on the site. This would subsequently solve the flooding issue at this part of the street. The grant was offered to Ms. Dickerman and the Coletti family as well. They both declined the offer. In May of that same year, we were notified that our request for federal funds was approved, and that the city of Warwick would be notified, and that they would have to contribute a share of the funds as well in order to finalize the project. Federal funds have been earmarked in the amount of $570,000. The city's match would be $178,000. Had the other two property owners accepted, the city would be looking at over $1 million for a match to take possession of the three properties. I was told that the city applied for a conservation grant to cover their portion of the buyout. Finally, I received an email in November from Mr. Fasenti, Chief of Staff for the Mayor of Warwick. He said that he was fairly new on the job, and he said that the city was waiting for a response from Rhode Island D E M pertaining to a conservation grant which they applied for to fund their end of the project. He also said that D E M had not responded to their request. I sent an email to House Speaker Joe Cicaci asking him to look into this situation. He, in fact, contacted Mr. Gray at D E M, who responded that he would look into the matter. I received the following email on 27 November from Mr. Fasenti. To be honest with you, the city does-
Your time is up, Mr. McDonald.
Say that again, please?
Time is up. Five minutes.
I didn't get a minute warning or nothing?
I'm sorry. I was too busy taking your notes.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. McDonald.
Next is, I believe this is Tammy Dickerman?
Hi, my name is Tammy Dickerman, and I live at 510 Govan Drive, which is the property next to Kevin and Beverly. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to see the interview on Channel 10 with Tamara and Mr. Fasenti, but I just want to clarify, in no way is this related, this flooding issue is not related to climate change. This is a longstanding issue that the city is aware of. There's a lot of documentation about the flooding. It goes way back, and the city has even been advised not to allow continued permits, yet it's still happening. In fact, within the last four years, there was a lot on the corner of Govan and Countryview that was sold and developed, and a large home was built on that. So again, now, the water that typically would drain in the earth is now in the street, goes in the storm drains, and goes behind our homes, and funnels into a 36-inch culvert, which was originally there when there were no homes. It's never been widened. It's clearly not enough to accept the water from the entire neighborhood. We're in a valley. Kevin and Beverly's home is like at the end of a funnel. So when the Department of Agriculture came to meet with us, I asked them if the flooding was, I was also flooded. I didn't have seven feet of water. I only had three. But I asked if the flooding was due to overdevelopment, and they said yes. And then I asked if, when permits are given for building, does anyone take into consideration where the water will go? And they said no. Typically, the cities and the towns want the revenue. And I understand that the city of Warwick needs the revenue, but they need to be responsible for the consequences. When I purchased the house in 2017, I did see that wall that was on the property. The owner was in the process of moving. He wasn't there. He was moving down south. I didn't know what that wall was for. I just thought it was some ugly mid-century design, but the flipper did buy it and tear it down. And my understanding was he had to tear it down because the city said it wasn't up to code. So now Beverly and Kevin purchased the home. They're not told that it's in an area that's prone to flooding, and they're left vulnerable. So in summary, they cannot sell that house because they have to disclose that it floods. It's flooded three times since they've been there. They've had one flood insurance cancel them already. Now they're in the second flood insurance carrier. Pretty soon, they're not going to be able to get flood insurance. They're not going to be insurable, and they have a house they cannot sell. There are federal dollars earmarked to take care of this, and I feel it would be a travesty for the, those funds to lapse because the city won't contribute. So that's my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Next is Barry Cook.
Good evening. Barry Cook, WAD 1. Several things I want to talk about tonight. First and foremost is Rule 41. Starting in the middle of February, when I was away in Florida, I wrote to each councilman a text message in which I said the following. It's high time that all members of the City Council respond to taxpayers in a respectful manner. This respect can be evidenced by changing your rules, Rule 41, to permit a council member or members to respond to a question or comment put forth in address to the council. When the entire City Council sits there without responding, it is an insult to residents and taxpayers. While I realize some council members would like to respond, they adhere to the council rule rather than attempt to amend the rule as I suggest herein. It's time to challenge the status quo and to stop hiding behind the rule as now written. I will be sending this to Council President Sinapi, as well as all the rest of the council. One of the things that I've talked about in the past, I recently received a note from someone who belongs to the Taxpayers Association, although I'm here tonight speaking on my behalf. One of my members said, "At the City Council meeting, it feels as if the public for whom they work and voted them in are treated like an unwanted guest." Now, let me say this. Of the nine council people that I have written to, eight have responded, either in a text message or a phone call. Only the president of the City Council has not responded. He has ignored four of my text messages without acknowledging receipt. Now, tonight is a perfect example of why Rule 41 should be amended. We have people here with serious concerns about drainage, flooding.
Mr. Cook, I need you on the mic. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I need you on the mic.
I can't hear you.
I need you speaking into the mic.
So tonight's a perfect example of why the rule must be amended. We have people here talking about serious drainage problems, and none of you folks even acknowledge their existence. Now, it seems to me, as I suggested in my text messages to all of you, one of the easy ways to show respect to the taxpayers would be to modify the rule that says a council person or council persons could easily show respect to the taxpayers by saying, "Thank you, Mr. Cook. We appreciate your input. I'll make a note and get back to you at a later date." Or, "Thank you, Mr. Cook." Or, "People with drainage problems, thank you for your input. I'll make a note. See me after the meeting." But none of you even do that. It's almost as if we should stay home because it's like you don't want to talk to us. So you need to modify this rule. And let me say this. I don't know who sponsored the rule. I don't care who sponsored the rule, but I know you're tired of me saying it, but I'm going to say it anyway. When I served on the East Providence City Council, yeah, I know, it was 40 years ago. I agree, it was 40 years ago. But I've sat like where you sit now, and when people came to an East Providence City Council meeting, they were treated with more respect than you people treat us. Now, I've had people tell me, "Oh, the open media law pro- Now, I've had people tell me, "Oh, the open meeting law prohibits us." That's a crock. Stop hiding behind a rule. Stop hiding behind the open meeting law. You people have the right to challenge the president of the City Council in any ruling that he makes. So if one of you attempted to speak up and acknowledge me tonight, and he attempted to shut you down, you have the right to call a vote of your fellow council people to overrule him. Now, he's already shown disrespect to me because he hasn't bothered to acknowledge any of my four messages. That's disrespectful.
You have one minute--
And for those of you who did respond, thank you. I want to comment on two other things. You also have tonight, I think, a resolution regarding the Freedom of Information Act, a bill pending in the State House, which would create a $25 maximum fee for research work done to answer a Freedom of Information Act. That resolution should be tabled and put away. That does not enable the public in Warwick to get information they need. You want to force us out by not responding at a council meeting, and Iowa charges $25 a page for research? That's nonsense. One final thing, and I'll sit down. You had a resolution, a discussion tonight on the agenda to talk about a bond premium, to use the bond premium for a different reason. I understand that wasn't heard tonight, and it's going to be deferred to a later date. Well, we've been down that road, too. Anything on the agenda I should be allowed to speak, whether you--
Time's up, Mr. Cook.
Push it off or not.
Time's up, Mr. Cook.
I understand. You could have me taken out by the police. You did that with authority.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mrs. Sinapi. Perhaps you should respond to my text--
Thank you for your time. Next up is Mr. Richard Langseth.
Time has not started yet, right?
I haven't gotten there yet, Mr. Langseth.
Richard Langseth, Budlong Farm Road. First, I'd like to comment on the people who spoke before, and Lynn failed to tell them of the one-minute warning. I would think that good council people would have extended the comments. I don't think that was fair. That was their first time here. They didn't understand the rules. I'm talking about PCR 3725, which is a resolution requesting the General Assembly to review and consider adopting provisions of the Rhode Island Civil Rights Enforcement Act. I'm offering you some grandfatherly advice here because I don't think the city understands what this is all about. And what it's all about are things like me coming before you and asking you to look at the ordinance of Buttonwoods, which says it's a private road. Now, when I am stopped by the Warwick police going to Old Buttonwoods, my civil rights are being violated, okay? If you read the statute, the proposed statute, you'll discover, as between an innocent party, myself, whose rights have been violated by the acts or admissions of a government entity could be the Buttonwoods Fire District, it could be the Warwick City Council. As defined in this chapter or agents thereof, City Council members, it is a governmental entity or an agent thereof shall bear the cost of any harm caused by such violation of rights, not the innocent party. Now, what this law-- what this proposed law does is codifies 42 USC 1983, which is called the Ku Klux Klan Act. And now, the state of Rhode Island has case law that allows me to go to court in Rhode Island under 42 USC and take people like the City of Warwick in and then sue them and have them pay for damages done to me. Okay. What this statute does is it codifies that into statute, so I don't have to argue USC 42-- you know, the federal law, I can just say, "Hey, this state statute says that you violated my civil rights, so you pay my lawyer fees, okay?" And we all go through this process of straightening the matter out, and you pay everything. I just can't imagine the City Council thinking this is a good idea to go to the legislature and say they should pass it. It is beyond me to think that the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns has endorsed this. It's already gone before committee. It's now being held. I really don't think you should be sending this to the state. I don't think it's in the interest of anybody to do that. In addition, I just wanted to bring to your attention, we had a case in Old Buttonwoods. It was a building of a property on Buttonwoods Avenue, and it went before the PAL. The PAL is the archaeological people who look for Indian bones and all these kinds of things. And what they presented to the developer and the proponents was a map from 1870, and this map says that Buttonwoods Avenue is a city-- is a town road. It gives you a number. It says it's number 166. And in the old days, we had surveyors of roads, and what surveyors of roads did was they went and they maintained the roads, and then they appropriated money after they maintained them. Jack is familiar with trying to get your money back. And the town might go to the abutters and say, "Okay, abutters, the surveyor roads fix the road, so therefore you pay." That makes it a public road. So just be aware that in addition to the colonial maps of the Royal Navy showing Buttonwoods Avenue as a public road, we also have a map--
You have 47 seconds, Mr. Langseth.
We also have a map in 1870, which is before the Buttonwoods Beach Association bought the property, showing it's a public road. Then the Buttonwoods Beach Association filed a plat map, which is a dedication of the roads in the plat map to the public. That's case law. But this road was already there. So they may have dedicated it, but they didn't need to because it was already a public road. So just, you know, the months are going to be going by. We're going to get in-- we're going to see our MC on April 8. Your people are invited, and we're going to be talking about these kinds of things. But be aware that the ordinance that you have saying Buttonwoods Avenue is private is not a good idea. And you can see USC 1983 is a good example--
Time's up, Mr. Langseth.
--of why it's not. And thank you very much.
That concludes the list. Councilman Ricks?
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Lattiser. Any objections? All right, so we'll take a five-minute recess. Be back at 7:36 PM. Well, 7:37 to be safe.
At the consent calendar, first we have PCR thirty six dash twenty five resolution relative to bids. So this is finance, Councilman Lattiser.
Move favorable action on PCR thirty six dash twenty five.
For action, Councilman Lattiser.
Move favorable action on PCR thirty six dash twenty five.
Seconded by Councilman Foley.
Thank you. Item number one, twenty twenty five dash zero eight five, found on page one, Telefoni Services. Item two, twenty twenty five four fifteen, Gray Shift Gray Key Cell phone. Cell phone. Number three, twenty twenty six zero one zero, Pace Nine Munis. Number four, twenty twenty six zero zero nine, Reaccreditation Services for Police Department. Five, twenty twenty five four thirteen, Magnet Axiom. Number six, twenty twenty six zero zero eight, Police Licensing and Advertising. Twenty twenty seven, I'm sorry, number seven, twenty twenty five three seventy five, Face Paint Otis. Item number eight, twenty twenty five three seventy six, Balloon Twister Otis. And I do have a question for legal counsel. On item twenty twenty five three seventy five, Face Paint Otis, there was a typo in their position paper. We did disclose it on the council floor. Is that something that we should set aside and do a PCR on, or is that clarification adequate?
The the resolution itself, the PCR is correct, and we'll have the record to reflect that typo. So the department can just submit the background documents that support that, but we don't need to change the resolution itself.
Okay, just wanted to to be sure we're in safe grounds on that. And that takes care of that, Council President.
So that concludes the consent calendar. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action on.
Seconded by Councilman Foley, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy.
Yes.
Mr. D. Louise.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gettard.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. Muto.
Yes.
Mr. Ricks.
Yes.
Next is unfinished business. First, we have PCR twenty five twenty five, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend chapters fifty and fifty-three of the Local Act and resolves of twenty twenty-two regarding the issuance of indebtedness for two new high schools and school facilities to expand the permitted use of bond premium. This is intergovernmental, so Councilman Gettard.
Withdrawn per request of the sponsor.
So for action, Councilman Gettard.
Move to withdraw.
Seconded by Councilman Lattiser. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy.
Yes.
Mr. D. Louise.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gettard.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. Muto.
Yes.
Mr. Ricks.
Yes.
A yes to withdraw.
Next, we have new business, PCR thirty four dash twenty five, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to review and consider adopting amendments to the public records laws as presented in twenty twenty five dash H five four five seven, from Councilman Napa. So intergovernmental, Councilman Gettard.
Per request of the sponsor, we recommend hold till April twenty first.
Seeing no objection, so hello. And next, we have referral and advertising. So PCO five dash twenty five, an order on the abandonment of a portion of Harper Street, John Harold, Barbara Harold, Karen Harold, Bruce Moore, Mary Moore, Nancy Stockard, and Jason Stockard petitioners. That'll be for Councilman Gettard, and then the other, Councilman Kirby, so close. The other one would be PCO seven dash twenty five, an order on the abandonment of a portion of Old Quaker Lane, Colby Enterprises LLC petition, and that'll be Councilman Gettard. Next, we have unanimous consent. PCO nine dash twenty five, an ordinance amending the Fire Department composition age requirements for appointees superintendent of fire alarms, mandatory retirement ages, and definitions. This is on behalf of the mayor, of the administration. Well, first, is there any objection to consideration by unanimous consent? Seeing none. Administration, I think we have Chief of Staff, Mr. Fasenti.
Good evening, Bill Fasenti, Chief of Staff to Mayor Pocozzi. This legislation before you tonight clarifies some language, outdated language in the Code of Ordinances under Section twenty, Fire Prevention and Protection. Chief McMichael is here, this legislation, to answer any specific questions. This legislation was reviewed by the city solicitor, the fire union, as well as the fire union attorney, and they had no objections to it. If you have any specific questions.
So Councilman Gettard, because he used his little light.
Hi, Chief.
Hello.
So why, my only question, well, I guess my only question for right now is, why is this coming to us in this manner under unanimous consent?
That's, I asked it to be docketed, and that's how it ended up getting docketed.
It was a light meeting, solicitor thought it was best if we can, if we can get it on here, why not?
Okay. That's all I got.
Councilman Lattiser.
Councilman Gettard must have peeked at my notes, but that's okay. That was one of my questions. First off, we need to amend this to show it's PCO nine dash twenty five sub A. This is the the second go around at this. Well, this coming to us as a sub A, right? It was in our binder originally, and then we received new language on it. So would it be a sub A or not?
It is not. The language that went live on Thursday was the official language, so it is in its proper form.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Councilman Gettard. So, Chief, that was one of my concerns as well. You know, what was, what was the big whoop-de-do about this? And, you know, why did it have to get put on unanimous consent? And that just starts triggering a whole other list of questions. I did have an opportunity to speak with the chief earlier. He addressed most of those questions, but I would like him to speak into the record what we did have for conversation. The first one was already answered. The second one is, why, why is this change needed? Why didn't it go before a committee? That question has already been answered. And who does this directly impact? And quite frankly, my concern was, is it something that is a self-serving interest? And why now do these changes necessary? So Chief, earlier, we went through pretty much every one of them, and would you just quickly go through that so everyone is clear on why these are coming about?
Certainly. Peter McMichael, Fire Chief. So the the first one, twenty forty-two composition merely updates the language, removes the language of Bureau of Fire, which no longer exists. It is now the Board of Public Safety, so it institutes that language, removing the last paragraph, I should say, correct me, the last sentence, which removes the various types of ranks and simply leaves it up to the Board of Public Safety to determine the ranks that will be deemed appropriate from time to time. And of course, this is also subject to the collective bargaining agreement. Section twenty fifty, age and residency requirement for appointees is changed to read age requirements for applicants. What we did was remove the must be a resident and registered voter of the city, a time of appointment, that no longer is is legal. So we removed that language, and we updated the ages, instead of the ages of being, for an applicant for the position of the Fire Department, from being twenty-one and shall not have passed his or her thirtieth birthday, we changed that to eighteen and shall not have passed his or her thirty-fifth birthday. So I'm not aware of any fire department having twenty-one as a age of application. Eighteen is consistent with the other communities are doing around us. And thirty-five, at the high end of that, allows a applicant to fulfill their pension obligation and retire with a normal regular pension after twenty-five years of employment. Twenty fifty-eight updates a position, which was superintendent of fire alarm, and it reflects the current collective bargaining language, which is now deputy chief of communications. Twenty one eighteen, mandatory retirement, changes that language to reflect current state law, which, we removed the certain ranks in there and put any member who holds the rank of battalion chief or higher, that covers all of the ranks that are affected by this. And they retire at the end of the calendar year after his or her sixtieth birthday, or sixty-fifth birthday, if applicable, and that is reflective of state law. And then, under definitions, under employee, the language stated employee means any employee of the city's fire department who is or has been represented by the union for collective bargaining purposes. At some point, I believe it was in two thousand and seven, language was changed. It was ordinance twenty forty-three, appointments of officers to be made from the ranks of the fire department. That language had some changes made to it, whereas just other than chief of department, so that the chief of department could be hired from outside the ranks of the fire department. So for the definition of employee, we made that definition reflect that ordinance, where it says the employee was represented by the union for collective bargaining purposes, or is or has been a sworn member. And that makes that employee definition cover everybody in the fire department. Yes.
Why is those three words, or has been, why is that significant in this?
Or is or has been, I would, I would defer to the city solicitor on that. Unfortunately, he's not present this evening, but this language was provided to the solicitor and also reviewed by the union attorney also to make sure we weren't violating any collective bargaining agreement.
So I guess my, my question is, or concern is, it says an employee means any employee, yada, 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 for collective bargaining purposes, or is or has been. So, or has been a sworn member, that would insinuate to me that there may be some rationale or reason for bringing, and I don't mean it the way it's going to sound, a has been employee back to the front lines. For for what reason? I don't understand what that is, why that would be. Why would a former non-employee all of a sudden be construed as now an employee? For what purpose?
There is no purpose. A former employee would not be able to come back as a employee in that capacity again. There is no one who would be under that category.
Chief, perhaps, Chief of Staff. Could, could you get a clarification from the solicitor on what the intent is of that sentence for the next go around? Because this is an ordinance, so we'll, we'll have another go around on this.
Yes, I believe I can. I'm not sure, but I believe this language may have been added by the fire union attorney.
Yeah, I don't, well, I don't know, I don't know what it means, but when something is put in there for the collective bargaining purposes, or is or has been a sworn member, what is the reasoning for putting in those words, or has been? There's got to be some legal intent for doing that. I sure don't know what it is, but I would like to hear from the solicitor, seeing the chief said the solicitor is the one that promulgated this language. So I need to know what that means.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. A few questions, some of which were already touched on briefly. So the change to, and I'm looking at the first of the four pages, section twenty dash fifty, I understand that the, and correct me if I'm wrong, under state law, we're no longer allowed to include a residency requirement, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Under state law, are we still allowed to have the minimum age requirement of twenty-one? Or under state law, do we have to allow for age eighteen, dropping that minimum age to age eighteen? Or is this more of a policy decision to try to get more applicants?
This is a policy decision. We're facing reduced numbers of applicants. All fire departments are struggling with the hiring process, with retaining firefighters, and this would open that pool up to us, to a larger pool of applicants, so that we don't limit ourselves to only twenty-one. I'm not aware of any fire department in the region that has a application age of twenty-one years old. It's pretty consistent across the board, where they're all doing eighteen years of age. And so we would be limiting ourselves to a smaller pool of applicants.
Not to, not to try to quiz here, but generally speaking, you would say that most of the the cities and surrounding communities in Rhode Island, age eighteen is the minimum as opposed to twenty-one? Okay. So, yeah, just, you know, not trying to play any kind of gotcha here, of course. What I'm interested in is, okay, how can we make sure that we're conforming with what surrounding cities and towns are doing in being competitive? That sounds reasonable. My concern there, of course, is that when hiring earlier, and given that there are lifetime benefits here, then if we're hiring applicants that three years earlier, then that tends to have an additional financial impact as to, at the time that they retire, three additional years of various benefits. But that also does mean more working years of younger, healthier, presumably, typically speaking. And then similarly, is it a policy or is it a state law consideration when it comes to the thirty-fifth birthday as opposed to the thirtieth birthday?
That would also be a policy. I'm not familiar with any state law that directly impacts that that age.
Okay. Yeah, and there it's, in fact, has a better fiscal impact for the city in certain ways. But the reason I'm sure that there was the initial requirement under the existing ordinance for not greater than passing the initial task, being an applicant before hitting age thirty, is because people tend to not be in peak physical health, able to do the frontline work quite as well in their fifties as perhaps they were in their twenties or thirties. But obviously, that's all part of the application process, too, and trying to find the most qualified member. Councilman Lattiser already raised the question that I had regarding the definition of employee on page three, under section twenty dash one forty-one. So I won't repeat that. I think that my questions as to the, the other aspects of this were already answered. And, well, I mean, I suppose one last question at the bottom of page three as to normal retirement age. So there's some language added there as to having attained social security eligibility to be eligible for the pension benefits. Is that something where, is there any actual policy change here? Or is this something where it's more just reflecting what's already part of the collective bargaining agreements?
So that would go back to the ordinance where that was changed, that allowed for an outside hire for the position of fire chief. When that was changed, the other corresponding language that also affects that, that position was not changed to reflect that hiring. So when looking at that, the normal retirement age, in this case, so for tier two, twenty, twenty-five years of credible service, for example, if someone who was hired who was fifty-five years old as an outside hire for the position of fire chief, has to retire by ordinance at age sixty-five, that would allow them to put ten years of vested service into the pension system, which would put them at twenty-five percent after ten years. They would have to wait until they were eighty years old, under the current language, to be able to collect that, because they would have to wait until they had normal retirement age, or would have, would have reached normal retirement time of twenty-five years. That person is prohibited from working that amount of time. That person is prohibited from working that amount of time because of the late age in life that they were hired at. Certainly, if an outside hire is made, that hire is always going to be at that later age in life. So they are not going to have the opportunity to get the 25 years of vested service in or wait for that period of when they'll be 80 years old by making it eligible at social security. Making them eligible to collect that social security eligibility allows them to collect that at an earlier reasonable age. I'm not familiar with any system that requires or makes someone eligible at 80 years old. That would be an obstacle to attracting future applicants to that position from the outside if that is a route that the administration chose to take.
It's on the tip of my tongue. Pardon me, I'm not just, I'm not quite remembering the term for it because I know that there is a specific program, not workers' compensation, but a separate program when a firefighter is, say, hurt on the job. And I know that there are benefits under that particular program. And it's my understanding that in some circumstances, one can receive social security disability insurance at the same time as getting those particular benefits. So I know that a lot of these different benefit systems are all set up in a very careful way so as to avoid some sort of incentive for, and I'm certainly not, certainly don't want to infer or otherwise say that a person would or wouldn't do something just for the money. But at the same time, when setting up these benefit systems, it is important to make sure that the systems are set up in such a way that a person doesn't wind up making more money while being out of work and hurt than if they were actually working. So I am just curious about the interplay between all of those different systems in which here, under this ordinance, it would be a matter of adding, allowing for the collection of pension benefits by definition concurrent with social security. So that is something where I would like to hear a little bit more from the city solicitor as well. I don't want to necessarily hold up first passage based on that. But I would certainly like to get a little bit more information presented just so that we're making sure that a seemingly innocuous change in definitions here doesn't wind up changing benefit structures to have a perverse incentive.
Right. And so I think the language that you're referring to, that while social security disability to be paid in the event someone is totally disabled, falls under different ordinance language that references disability and a disability pension, disability benefits, accidental disability. This is totally separate from that. This is an ordinary pension benefit, not disability. So that would not be affected by the social security disability language that you're referencing. This is a ordinary, regular retirement. And in this case, at 10 years, it would be the 20%, not the full 50% after 25 years of pension contribution at the 10-year mark. It's only a 20% pension benefit.
I think I'm on the same page there. So really, I think what might clear that up is if it specified age-based social security eligibility. But, yeah, it'd be, it's something where I'd want to just make sure that that's all run by the city solicitor, see if there might possibly need to be that verbiage of age-based out there or if it would be unnecessary. I've just come across and otherwise heard about different litigation where things have been litigated for things that are less unclear, for lack of a better term, than this. And I don't want us to accidentally create some sort of perverse incentive here. Thank you.
So Councilman Bill Fosanti, Chief of Staff. To the chief's point, that disability pension, social security disability is covered under a different ordinance. If you want me to ask the city solicitor a question, I'm going to need a little bit more specific than what you said. So can you give me a concise question?
Well, certainly. I can follow up later if this isn't clear. But, yeah, for the moment, it would be a matter of, okay, bottom of page three.
No, I know where you are. It's just, I just need, like, what do you want me to ask? Because it does say, or having attained social security eligibility, which is age-based. So if you're asking me to ask him about age-based social security, it already mentions social security eligibility, which is age-based.
Right. So unfortunately, it doesn't include expressly age-based social security eligibility. I understand that the header is under the, the header here is normal retirement age. But.
Right, no, but I'm just saying, social security eligibility in general is age-based. You're not eligible for social security unless you reach a minimum age, like mine, 67 and a half.
Sometimes social security eligibility.
Councilman Ricks, you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. I'll wrap it up briefly then. Oftentimes, the social security eligibility as a three-word phrase is interpreted broadly to include social security disability insurance also administered by the Social Security Administration. So we don't want any, I would suggest we don't want any lack of clarity on that because then this would have an entirely different meaning where benefits would be compounding on top of each other instead of offsetting or in accordance with the benefit scheme as intended. That's all.
Okay. I'll see what I can come up with.
Councilman Gebhardt.
This is just a very quick one for the chief. The fire chief, Mike Michael. I see very nice synergy between the entrance age being 18 years old and that the lifesaver CTC program that we run out of Pilgrim that, you know, kids can graduate almost as a fully licensed EMT. So that's a nice pathway. I have mentioned this to the school committee chair, but I think whatever you can do to bridge that might be a boon to both, you know, recruitment, but also recruitment of, you know, kids that come from the Warwick School System. So thank you for considering that.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, councilman, I'm going there Friday to talk to that group about interview techniques and the do's and don'ts and any advice I can give them to help them out. But they are a, it's a great program that Pilgrim's doing over there. And I'll be there Friday to speak to them.
Councilman Gebhardt. Well, let's try again. Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I want to follow up a bit on Councilman Ricks's question. On the normal retirement age, it says what it says, or having attained social security eligibility in tier one. Tier two, it says the same thing. Do you have any members of the department that qualify under those terms right now?
No.
And how is this going to, if this were to pass, how is it going to impact the 80 rule for retirement?
I'm sorry, councilman, how will it affect the what?
The 80 rule. As I understand it, the 80 rule, it's your time in service plus your age equals 80, which allows you to collect your maximum pension.
So that will have no impact on anyone other than a fire chief selected from outside of the department? Because anyone else that is hired, coming up through the ranks, they're hired, they have their full amount of time vested in the pension system by the time they reach retirement age. In fact, by the time they've reached mandatory retirement age, they've already maxed out in the system or at least have the maximum amount that they can contribute.
And how is this going to, how is this going to work out where what you're apparently looking to do is tie the pension disabilities, I think you had said, tie it to social security?
No, no. So the disability, any reference to the disability pension or disability social security has nothing to do with what I'm bringing up here this evening. That is a totally, those are separate ordinances that are not referenced in any of the language I'm bringing before the council.
This social security language that you're speaking to over here, or having attained social security eligibility, does that language, and maybe the chief of staff would probably need to answer this, is that language included in any other bargaining group's contract, such as police or municipal?
This isn't, I don't believe it's included in any contract language. It's only in the ordinance.
Okay. So this should be something that would be geared specifically for the fire department?
Yes. I believe on the police side, they don't have the mandatory retirement ages that fire has. I'm not sure why, but that is strictly related to fire. And I don't know on the municipal side, I don't know what the ages are for municipal.
And I understand your rationale for lowering the age from 21 to 18. But that would also mean that firefighter could retire three years younger too, right?
He would still have to put the same amount of time into the system. He would still have to contribute. So somebody hired today under tier two would still be required to put 25 years in. Or having reached age 50, I believe is the language, and having attained the age of 50. So for tier two, it means 25 years of credible service, not or. It's and having attained the age of 50.
Okay, so even though he's hired at 18, he still wouldn't be able to collect the pension till he was 50?
Correct. Got it. Okay. That's the questions I have for now, Mr. President. Thank you.
Solicitor.
Thank you. I was just contemplating the original question that you had, Councilman Lattiser, about the additional wording added to the definition of employee. It seems like the existing ordinance as written, and that's been around for a while, isn't fully contemplating situations. For example, the, a situation where a member, a sworn member, not being a member of the union. Currently, the ordinance wouldn't really read to capturing that person as it relates to their benefits and everything under this ordinance. So what it seems to be contemplating is making clear that an employee who is a sworn member is able to be treated in this manner regardless of whether or not they're part of the collective bargaining unit or not.
So why not strike that language then? Why even have it? If it doesn't mean anything, why have it? I'm concerned of the unintended meaning that this could have. You're saying it doesn't really mean anything, so why have it?
I'm saying it appears to update something that is a gap in our existing ordinance, that it's not necessarily applying things to circumstances whereby a member may not be part of the bargaining unit. So rather than the definition of employee saying it's only those that are in the bargaining unit, if they're still a sworn member, the ordinance isn't contemplating a situation of that nature. I'm not saying it actually exists either. It's providing that option.
With all due respect, I'll still fall back on my request.
This comes at the administration's request. I'm happy to work on it. I'm just merely trying to reflect on it in real time for you that it is, it seems to be catching a gap as to how the current definition is written.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Requested favorable action. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Muto. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will vote in the affirmative on this, but I will also await the city solicitor's comments on that language, or is or has been a sworn member, and reserve my right to reverse my support for this.
Any other questions or comments? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy.
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. Muno.
Yes.
Mr. Ricks.
Yes.
Yes, first passage.
Next, we have PCR 37-25, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to review and consider adopting provisions of the Rhode Island Civil Rights Enforcement Act. Is any objection to this being considered under unanimous consent? Bless you. All right, seeing none? So I'll give just a brief context. We actually, counsel, solicitor?
Before we dive in onto the next item, I'm going to make sure that there's any other questions or comments from members in the public. That item was not heard in committee.
All right. Any questions or comments, members of the public? Well, first regarding PCO 9-25? Oh, there happen to be none, okay. Any questions or comments regarding PCR 37-25? From members of the public? Are you a member of the public? Speaking on behalf? All right. So the context I was going to give is that we previously supported this act last session. The reason why I brought it back is because there was two substantive changes. So I didn't want to represent that the Warwick City Council supported it and misspeak if people weren't satisfied with the two substantive changes. And the short version of what the bill itself did prior was that it simply gives you the ability to enforce your rights under the Rhode Island Constitution. Currently, as a private citizen, you have no remedy for violations of your rights under the Rhode Island state constitution. That, for those who don't know, that's a very large problem, like massive problem, that that's not possible to enforce right now. So we supported it last time. This time, it's the same thing with the caveat of now it also applies to any governmental entity or agent, which that part is kind of standard. The other addition is that it applies to both the Rhode Island Constitution and the laws of Rhode Island. So this is in an effort to track the language of section 1983 and its interpretation and scope analysis because it is very well-settled law and extremely limited. And without adding that additional and laws part, certain rights would get missed, such as reproductive freedom, because as those know, that went out the window with the U.S. Supreme Court, but Rhode Island state law enshrined it. But in order to be able to have that right enforceable, you need something like this. And also same-sex marriage. So again, this allows for those sort of things to be still enforceable. So those are the two substantive changes that I wanted to make sure people are aware of before assuming people were supportive. So with that being said, floor is open. Any questions, comments? Councilman Lattiser.
I'm not sure what the appropriate questions should be for this. So in the absence of the questions, what I'm going to request, because obviously I'm not an attorney, is some examples. And I'm looking for the first example under 42-112, purpose. As between an innocent party whose rights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to see, or have someone give me an example as to how that applies.
Which portion? So I'm clear?
From 12 through number 15. It says, as between an innocent party whose rights have been violated by acts and or missions of a government entity, as defined as defined in this chapter and/or agents thereof, it is the governmental entity and/or agents, therefore shall bear the cost of harm caused by such violations of rights. I think one example that was given by a member of the public was the Buttonwoods Fire District. Is that an appropriate example of this? Or you can cite me a different example?
So if the Buttonwoods Fire District fell under the definition of governmental entity as defined here, sure, it's possible, but there's other caveats to it. They have to be acting as the governmental entity. There's a whole slew of, but this, 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 why this thing is being extremely limited in its scope? Because you actually have to fit in there? So a better example would be, let's see, the mayor, ridiculous thing. Oh, we'll use us rather than the mayor. The city council said... Says no one gets to speak here except the city council under any circumstances. So a violation of First Amendment? Don't look at me that way. Under any circumstance?
We can't hear what the city solicitors, or the council solicitors are saying.
So right now, if we applied our time limits differently, if you recall from when we did the rules, I said the time limit has to be the same to the public and the city council, otherwise it violates the First Amendment per the courts. So that's the federal First Amendment. So as far as any state constitutional right, state First Amendment or anything of the sort, you have no enforcement action capable. So if someone violated a right specific to the state, you just have to sit on your hands. You can't do anything. And certain state rights are different. So for instance, the Second Amendment in Rhode Island happens to be stronger. I always use that example because it's so obvious. It just says, "The right to bear arms shall not be abridged," and then there's a period. There's no any added caveat. So it is common that you have your own individual set of rights under the Rhode Island constitutional or under any state constitution you happen to live in. It is, I don't think it's, occurs anywhere else in the country, I hope not, where you can enforce your rights under your state constitution. That is absurd. And hopefully, we are the only one like that, although it's also shameful if we're the only one. But I guess there is no excuse. It's really bad. Especially now, we think about from the changing federal landscape, where people have different ideas as to what your federal rights mean. And then that percolates into the courts. So what your right means at the federal level, given that it's a now rather amorphous, your federal rights might not be enough. The fact that you can enforce them, that might not actually help you, depending on how the country goes. And unfortunately, it's going in a very interesting way currently.
Not sure if that really made it clear, at least in my interpretation.
So as of now, the Rhode Island City League of City and Towns, I've been watching their updates. They haven't come out against this that I've seen. Most groups are outright for this. I don't know of any that are against it. And just like last time, it was seen as kind of very benign. I think last time, the league outright opposed it. I don't know of any opposition this time, though.
So on page two, line 16, under cause of action, "A government entity shall be liable for any harm caused to an aggrieved party subject to a deprivation prescribed under section yada, yada, yada."
Yep.
So that also means the city council or the town council? Or does that also include boards and commissions? The Board of Public Safety, the Board of Appeals, et cetera, et cetera? Are all of those entities included in this item that I'm not totally clear on?
If it was possible already for one of those entities to be included for a liability for violation of federal rights, then assuming that Rhode Island has a duplicative right, then yes. But it's not like, you're not adding something that they weren't liable for in the first place, because they already violated somebody's rights. They already were liable under the federal constitution. This just also makes them liable under the Rhode Island constitution. And despite that, it's not usually, you can't double dip. And that's Councilman Rix will tell you and Councilman Napa will say it. You can't, just because you can't just start stacking on damages, it's still enough to make you whole, plus whatever attorney's fee. So it's not like you're getting, oh, this statute has attorney's fees provisioned in this one too. So now I get double. It's not how it works.
Further down, it says, "Provided that neither the state of Rhode Island nor any of its political or administrative subdivisions." What is a political or administrative subdivision?
Department of Education, be an example.
And?
Could be applicable to pretty much every form of government that is under the umbrella of delegation of the state, by the state. So for example, we're a legislative charter of municipality. We're technically a subdivision. But department agencies, the quasi, the airport, et cetera, they're all governmental entities or some, different classes of subdivisions underneath.
And again, the key caveat is, it's not like this is new stuff. So if we were already exposed under the federal constitution, so therefore we'd be exposed under the Rhode Island constitution.
So then, is it fair to say that what you're, what you're speaking to right now in these explanations, essentially it's taking state law to mirror federal law? Or to update the language in the state law to bring it up to par with the federal law?
Yeah, it's to fix a colossal screw-up made probably before we existed. Actually, definitely before we existed, where for whatever reason, they did not put in the ability to enforce your own rights in the Rhode Island constitution. Some, someone somewhere dropped the ball. And I believe it was within the last few years, there was a court case or one or two where suddenly this came to light, where courts were like, wait a minute, yeah, you can't, you can't enforce those rights. And they definitively said, no. And so now people are like, oh, well, we gotta, we gotta fix that.
Last question is on page three. It is line eight. "This chapter, whether the relief is obtained as a result of a judgment settlement or the voluntary change in behavior of the governmental entity after the filing of an action." What does that mean? Or the voluntary change in behavior of the governmental entity?
So if a governmental entity was told, hey, you're violating the law?
I'm sorry?
Like if we were violating the law via our time limits? Like the example I described before? So then we stopped violating the law? We said, oh, we'll fix that? So that would be a voluntary change in our behavior?
So... An example would be if we, I'll use the council rules. We make a change in the council rules that somewhat runs afoul of this. That would be a voluntary change in behavior?
If it ran afoul of it, I mean, from the not version of it, yes, it's a voluntary change of behavior, but not the kind that's contemplated here.
What kind is contemplated, compli, yeah, that word.
That clauses in regards to prevailing party when the, the party violating the rights of whomever voluntarily changes their behavior to stop doing that.
I'll stand down. I'm still confused, but I'll stand down.
And so you are under no obligation to vote yes? You are under no obligation to vote no? Don't feel pressured to do one or the other? My only caveat is, we supported it before. The only two substantive changes are the ones I spoke of initially. And if it seems like a weird situation, it's because it is. It is very bizarre that this gap currently exists. So I'm, so Councilman Muto?
Same thing. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm actually a little confused. If, can you simplify saying, who does this benefit? And who can, does this potentially harm?
So it benefits every citizen in Rhode Island. It potentially harms any governmental entity that wishes to either continue violating someone's rights or wishes to contemplate doing so in the future. If you want to do the more, the, the less severe vote at it, let's say someone innocently violates rights. That's still, you could say it could hurt them. But usually, I mean, the kind of situation this is contemplating is typically the, basically the kind you see on the news, where X, Y, Z did this, and now they're suing. It's not usually a situation where, hey, you're doing something you're not allowed to. Please change it. And you go, oh, okay, and you change it. We're talking about people who have basically, based on my experience, and again, Councilman Rix, you've had the cases. Usually civil rights cases only happen when something egregious has happened. The benign stuff, when people say, please change it, it just gets changed and you never hear about it on the news because it was, it's a non-issue. Just people make mistakes, so they fix it when it's brought to their attention, as opposed to people who basically say, walk off, we don't care about you. So it will definitely hurt those cities and towns who want to keep grinding down citizens, which I have just, you can imagine, I have no sympathy for them. Including if it was us, I would have no sympathy for us if we wanted to basically put citizens under our heel. Councilman Lattiser?
Out of curiosity, has either chamber at the State House moved on this?
I don't believe it has come up for vote yet. I believe last cycle, it passed one of the two. I can't recall which. I just don't recall which chamber it passed last time. But this time, I don't believe it passed one of them yet.
So it's still sitting in committee in both chambers?
I believe so. I want to say yes. That's partially why it came to us under unanimous consent, so that our voice could be heard one way or another.
Would, would it make sense for us to wait and see if there's movement at the General Assembly on this?
So for me, no, it wouldn't make sense, just from my perspective on the issue. But you are more than entitled to have that outlook. That's absolutely fair. Just like you're more than entitled to say you hate it. All these things are absolutely allowed.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Rix. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Sinapi.
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gethart.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yeah.
Mr. Lattiser.
A reluctant yes.
Mr. Muto.
Yes.
Mr. Ricks.
Yes.
Aye, yes.
And that's it. So... First, we have... Do you have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Gethart? Any opposition? Seeing none? Does anyone have anything for unanimous consent? For the upcoming meeting? And seeing none, docket session? Who's going to do it? I just consider it a war between Foley and Lattiser usually. No, no, Foley doesn't want to do it. All right, Councilman Lattiser. So we're in the docket session now. So Ward one? Ward two?
One item. A resolution recognizing the month of April as National Arab American Heritage Month.
So Community Affairs, Ward three. He's not here. Ward four.
Uh, yes. Like to make a resolution regarding council meeting schedule.
Intergovernmental, Ward five.
Yes, I have one. It's a resolution. It's being co-sponsored by Council President Sinapi, Councilman Muto, and any other co-sponsors are more than welcome to sign on. It's a resolution to the General Assembly regarding council amendments.
Regarding charter change, right?
I'm sorry, charter amendments.
Intergovernmental. Councilman Muto, Ward six. Ward seven. Ward nine? And so then I have two? Two. On behalf of the mayor, ratification of memorandum of agreement between the City of Warwick and Local 1651, Council 94 AFSCMA AFL-CIO regarding open. Their acronym needs to change. Intergo? Or for, intergovernmental? And then on behalf of the mayor, resolution to the General Assembly regarding the school committee composition, and co-sponsored by Councilman Lattiser. And also co-sponsored by Councilman Foley, Councilman Muto, Councilman Kirby, Councilman Rix, Councilman DeLuise.
And he did too.
Oh, and Councilman Gethart, sorry. So everybody but Napa, because he's a bum and didn't come here.
He wasn't saying by, he was saying co-sponsored.
All right, and that's everything. So we stand done at 8:40 PM.